States of America and whose republic where stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andrew.
Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. We have a number of council members and I think the mayor that are all traveling so we're gonna change our schedule just a little bit. We'll do the agenda review for the fourteenth and then the twenty-first and then we'll do the background information on the EOC and then we'll actually save the tabletop exercise for when we get everybody in the room. I think that everybody will benefit from that if we're okay with that. We'll just take that. Okay, onto the fourteenth. Excuse me. On the, you've got one person so far on the public agenda, three proclamations. On page two, number one, new council business would approve funding for design of this, of two street and one bridge improvement project. Page three, number two, would approve final design build contract amounts for improvements to the Hess reservoir. Number three would approve the funding for art installations at the Alford and Walters branch libraries. Number four would approve the public art conservation program for 2025, 2026. And number five would approve the contract renewal with visit Wichita for 2026. On the next page, number one, on non-consent planning agenda would approve a zoning change in District Two. This applicant is appealing a condition that was included in the MAPC recommendation. I think that's right, Scott.
They actually would like to have a condition added that was not included and it would limit the occupancy.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Next page, number two, would approve a zoning change in District Three. This item had been referred by you back to the DAB on September second. The DAB's now reviewed it again and bring the recommendation for approval. Nothing left on that page and nothing on the following page. On, with item number five, would approve the donation of a bronze sculpture for the Alford library story walk. Number six would approve a revised budget for the installation of a fitness court in Osage Park. You approved the acquisition of the park, of the court, excuse me, previously. Vice Mayor, that's all I have for the fourteenth. On the twenty-first, bring your dinner, might as well plan early, a lot of items on that agenda. Number, new council business, number one, on second page, would approve a project to purchase replacement police equipment in 2026. Number two would approve a project to purchase a SWAT critical incident vehicle, a bomb unit vehicle, a mobile command vehicle, and mobile operations vehicles, all for the police department. Number three would approve a letter of intent with laying Gen Y for an IRB issue to remodel the eighty-eight thousand square foot office building. Number four would approve a letter of intent for issuance of healthcare facility revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed sixty million dollars, as for the Larksfield Place retirement communities. Next page, number five, would approve the issuance of revenue bonds to fund up to sixty million dollars in capital improvements for Ascension Via Christi hospitals in Wichita. Number six would approve an amendment to the development agreement with EPC for the development of the West Bank. Number seven would approve contracts for competency evaluations for municipal court. Number eight would reduce the number of members on the Animal Services Advisory Board from eight to seven. Number nine has a number of items in it. First of all, consider the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code, the elimination of environmental court, the creation of a new adjudication process for property maintenance cases, the adoption of a source of income discrimination ordinance, and the adoption of a rental registry ordinance. You've workshopped all of those items before. Number ten would approve a project to remodel a portion of the former central library to serve as an event venue. Number eleven would approve the Phase Two agreement and guarantee maximum price for the Four Mile Creek digester expansion project. Number twelve would approve two agreements with the Union Pacific Railroad for groundwater treatment operations in the Twenty-Ninth and Grove Environmental remediation area. Number thirteen would approve the 2026 funding allocations for arts and cultural organizations. Nothing on the next page. Following page, three A, would extend existing lease agreements with Flex Bus, excuse me, Flix Bus and Greyhound for six months until the hub is open. They currently are using the transit center. Next page, number seven, would approve a revised budget for Patrol West to reflect building modifications. Number eight would approve budget for Phase One of the Crystal Prairie Lake Park project. Next page, twelve and thirteen, settle two public housing authority homes. Number fourteen would approve a land lease to allow the construction of an eighteen thousand square foot hangar at Jabara. And number fifteen would approve security arrangement for the financing of WSU, Techs, and Cat expansion project at Jabara. Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from council members? Anything happen this weekend?
Just a reminder, district breakfast tomorrow, nine thirty at the Child Advocacy Center. Firefighters will be cooking breakfast and we will be discussing improvements to the firefighter memorial, fallen firefighter memorial. So I'd love to have anybody, even if you're not in South Wichita, please come on down, it's a great breakfast.
Are you having the potatoes?
I'm not sure potatoes are on the agenda this time.
They're the best.
Okay.
One reminder that there's also the dedication of the Holocaust Memorial tomorrow at three thirty.
Okay. Okay. Pat?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, as I said, we have a presentation for you to talk a little bit about the EOC and your role when it's activated and the, we'll actually do the hands-on exercise later. Turn it over to Chief Snow.
As the city manager said, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So as the city manager said, today what we are going to concentrate on is just basically the function of EOC, kind of giving you a big general overview of the function of EOC and then what our roles and responsibilities are and then how we take care of what we need for resource management, what we need for when we identify our responses, and then how do we coordinate together as a community locally, both city and county, and any other surrounding jurisdictions to get our community back to a place of restoration. So with me today, I have Julie Stimson, who is the Director of Emergency Management, and then she has two of her training instructors, Kenji and Jonathan are both here today. So game plan for today is each of you have a book, a little pamphlet, it will follow the slide presentation so you're, you can make some notes in it, ask some questions. Today will just be the overview and then we'll come back at a later date and we'll actually do a tabletop exercise. So today we'll kind of prep you for things you need to be thinking about when we do the tabletop exercise. So with that then, I will turn it over to Julie and you can use the prompt there.
All right, thank you, Chief Snow. Good morning, everyone. As Chief said, I am Julie Stimson, the Sedgwick County Emergency Management Director. I'm gonna be very conscious of your time today, so I'm gonna kind of go through some of this quickly. This is meant to be an overview to generate some thoughts and then down the road, we're gonna do more training, we're gonna do more exercises as Chief Snow alluded to. So without further ado, we were kind of gonna go through an exercise today, but we're gonna table that into a later time, so I'm gonna kind of get through these exercise objectives. What we want to make sure is people understand senior elected officials at each level of government are charged with the responsibility of protecting and promoting public health and welfare for their citizens. Major responsibilities of elected officials is policymaking, setting priorities, and we'll talk a little bit about declaration of emergencies and declarations of disasters and what that actually means. As we do know, we always hear disasters start and end at the local level and a lot of folks will think that that means county. It is actually at the city, the municipality level is what that is intending for when we say local level. I'm not gonna read all of this, but just know that there are Kansas statutes that dictate what we do as a state and as a county for emergency management. It does establish that the state and county emergency operations plan has precedence over local ordinances during a declared disaster. So although I said disasters start and at the local level, the state will only coordinate resources through the county emergency management. Several cities in Kansas have emergency manager or some sort of person called emergency planner, emergency coordinator, but if there needs to be resources requested from the state, that will always go through the county. All political subdivisions within the state are automatically part of a Kansas Mutual Aid system unless they provide a resolution opting out and no one has done that to my knowledge. In the EOC, which is Emergency Operations Center, we actually have three different levels. Level three is monitoring and especially with weather being our largest risk, we are monitoring almost all the time, even if it's not thunderstorms, we're looking at winds, we're looking at drought, we're looking at wildfire conditions. In the wintertime, we're looking at ice, snow, wind chills, extreme temperatures, that kind of thing. Partial activation means we need some partners in the room to coordinate, collaborate together that we have some things that need to be taken care of even proactively or reactively. And full activation is when something big is impacting our communities and I need all hands on deck, one, to get situational assessment and then two, to also help coordinate those resources. So just kind of be aware, although we don't have a lot of full activations thankfully, we are still very active behind the scenes and making sure that our communities are prepared and ready to respond. Kind of like I mentioned, level three activation, monitoring, normal activities. I have a duty officer on call twenty-four seven that we're monitoring nine-one-one calls, so that's kind of our first indication if something's happening. We prepare for all hazards, so not just weather, if we hear that there's a hazardous material release, if we hear that there's civil unrest. Those type of things are also what emergency management is prepared to come and coordinate resources for us to make sure our responders especially have what they need to respond and that our community have the resources to recover whatever incident may have occurred. Like I mentioned with level two, partial activation, that means I don't need to have every single person in the EOC. In your packet is actually a map of our EOC layout, which we'll get to here in a moment, but if I don't need to have my first responders in the EOC, I just need to have some other services, I'm not gonna bring people in if I don't have to. And like I mentioned, level one means I need to have every organization that has a desk in the EOC to send that representative that has policy and decision-making authority. We need the person that's gonna help make decisions and communicate any policy changes or updates that we need to do, not just having a person sit in the seat and answer phone calls and somebody who really can represent the department or organization and make those decision-making authorities. So during a disaster, elected officials have responsibility for the safety and security of the jurisdiction. It demonstrates extraordinary leadership in decision-making. Elected officials make a significant impact on the response and at highlight and recovery. We're really good with training and testing and exercising our first response, our life safety measures. We're not so good, and I'm saying we as a county even, aren't so good at going into that recovery, especially with long-term recovery. Our tornado in 2022 was the most recent example, it took almost three years for us to fully recover our community in Andover from that tornado impact. So we're gonna do a lot more teaching, training, and exercising on that long-term recovery because that is really what our senior and elected officials are going to guide and lead our communities through. We also want to avoid elected officials showing up to the disaster scene. I know our hearts want to go out there right away and hug our constituents and support them, but we need to make sure it's safe. We need our first responder agencies to have everything they need to respond, we don't need distractions, and we don't need to have even the public kind of following to jam up highways and roadways and that stuff. Ideally, an escorted tour of the disaster area will be arranged either through emergency management or those incident commanders that are out there on the scene. So we will get our elected officials out there as soon as possible, but we want to make sure safety comes first and that our first responders are not having to deal with How do we, elected officials provide leadership? Delegating authority to the on-seam responders, instilling confidence in the public that the incident is being managed. Anytime there's a crisis, our public is going to look for that right away of what policy decisions, what resources can be secured. One of the things that we could look at through relief and recovery is, you know, is there certain things that can be waived, permit fees for example on rebuilding, can we waive some of those fees to help our public? Extending payment due dates, those are the type of things that elected and senior officials can make to help our communities recover from disasters. Building partnerships and alliances, the last place we want to exchange business cards is in the middle of a disaster and that's something, again, we're gonna work really hard on with all of the departments and cities and jurisdictions to make sure that people know what we are doing behind the scenes and know who we are, how to get ahold of us, so when something happens, we know and we can build trust into each other. And then we also want to work on risk mitigation and resilience. So it's not just about rebuilding our community, but how do we rebuild stronger so we're not as vulnerable as we were the first time? And that, that is a very strong challenge because that costs money, of course, and money is always a challenge, but if we're working together, we should come up with some creative solutions without breaking the, breaking the big book. Multi-agency coordination, we call these MAT groups, sometimes policy groups, and this is what my senior officials and elected officials fall into. Executive executives are designated, have a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities of successful emergency management and incident response. And we talk about NIMS and, sorry for the acronym, that's the National Incident Management System. How does, even as a nation, how do we all work together and stay on focus and work towards a common good for the greatest amount of people? We do have several training opportunities that we'll talk about and it's also in your workshop to kind of help facilitate what does that mean and how do we get you guys ready to go. We have a class that's called G four zero two, we actually had this, oh gosh, it came up, if it was earlier this year, if it was last year, time's a funny thing. Highly encouraged to attend this class, we bring it locally for a purpose, is to get folks in the room to have these conversations about how as a local community, how ready are my senior and elected officials? I know my first responder agencies are ready, a lot of times they're doing what they do every day just on a larger scope, but in disaster management, disaster response and recovery from senior and elected officials, things get prioritized different and there's different expectations from the public and from the media and from state and federal government. And then we have what we call the community lifelines. So community lifelines is something I'm favorable, we're going to this model because it talks about your transportation, it talks about your utility grids, it talks about your healthcare system, literally do it in red, yellow, green, what is the status as a community of those critical resources? And that helps senior elected officials also know where to prioritize decision-making capabilities. Then there's a whole bunch of other training here, on the right with the gray, those are all independent study courses that you can take at any time and those instructions are also in the packet of how to sign up for those classes. They're self-paced. Again, we're gonna be hitting hard and heavy in the next coming years on these kind of trainings, so this is what we feel and you guys feel that you are prepared and ready to go. These are the lifelines that I kind of talked about and I know the font is kind of hard to read, but the categories up on top is safety and security. Again, we're gonna do the red light, yellow light, green light, what's the status as a whole, what are we working on? Food, hydration and shelter, health and medical, energy which includes power and fuel, communications. Communications is an Achilles' heel, communications is identified in every disaster, every training and exercise as a challenge and we can just keep working together to try to improve as much as we can. Transportation, hazardous materials and water systems. So again, we're gonna use a simple, green means minimal impact, yellow means moderate, red means significant impact or no service at all, and gray means unknown and maybe still assessing it. So you're gonna hear about this in the next coming years, I just want you guys to be familiar with what we're talking about. So we were gonna go through a scenario of a tornado actually coming through downtown metro and doing some significant damage to the buildings that we have downtown. We have been fortunate and I don't want to jinx us, but a lot of our storms have done some damage, but it has not really had a significant impact on the heart of downtown. And my concern is if we do have that, we've got debris, we've got people injured, people trapped, it's, it's a scenario we need to walk through and talk through. We don't have to jump into a full scale and bring resources, let's just have conversations at the table and start kind of building and having those discussions. You know, what kind of plans do we have in place already that we can train and exercise on? Those are type of the things that we want to talk about. But for, like Tom, we're gonna, this scenario will get drawn out in a later time, so go through that. One of the, we guys have these packets to take with you, there is a page called a THIRO and it's kind of towards the back, that means threat hazard identification, risk assessment. This is a scenario that kind of has some statistics through here with numbers in your population. If you've got fifteen or a hundred fifty thousand people impacted, if you've got ten thousand five hundred people with limited English proficiency, how are we preparing, how we're responding to and how are we helping our population recover from disasters? So just kind of some numbers to think about for the city of Wichita and kind of what we're gonna be talking about in the next year or so about how we are planning and how we are preparing for a disaster that would impact the Wichita metro area. We've got the community lifelines in there, how to create a training account. There is also a checklist and I know some of our elected folks came through our Emergency Operations Center and kind of had some one-on-one time with us to talk about this checklist, but all of this training that we're doing, there is a quick and easy checklist to always keep handing to remind you of when we do have a disaster, what are the things you should be thinking about beforehand, during, and after. So it's kind of your cheat sheet of just, oh my gosh, something has happened, where am I starting? And then also the map of the Emergency Operations Center, which is just a couple blocks down to our north, we have highlighted, the yellow stations are actually city network workstations where we have hooked up to the city network. We have trained EOC representatives from those departments, but we want to make sure that we are aware of what that room can be used for. And again, I'd rather have you guys report to a room like an EOC than the incident scene and so we get reassurance that it's safe and that we're not gonna get in the way of our first responders. So kind of a tease, more to come. I appreciate you letting me get in front of you. I appreciate you letting me get in front of you. You know, we have the plan to prepare for things we hope never happen, but it's to make us better when these things do happen. And we've had plenty of reminders from flash floods to windstorms to tornadoes and everything in between, that things do happen in our community, and we want to be as prepared as we can. Any questions?
What kind of training do you have with community partners and nonprofits to get into these areas? Is it sufficient? Do you feel good about where we are in working with them?
Yes. We do a lot of training and exercises, tabletop discussions with our first responder, our human services. In our EOC, we do drills, we do full-scale exercises and everything in between. We've got a really good relationship with folks like our Red Cross, United Way, Salvation Army, they actually have a seat in the EOC. So anytime we're doing training and exercises, we're bringing them into the room to have those discussions.
Do you feel good about, are there any gaps that we do need to concentrate on? For example, if there is a large-scale tornado getting people into housing, is it just like we have an ability up to a certain point? Or do we feel confident that we would be able to get ten thousand people into housing or five thousand?
I have concerns. Those are the conversations that we need to have, absolutely. I think there's some planning and preparedness that we need to do for those type of large-scale incidences. I am not going to say I'm a hundred percent confident that we could handle this tomorrow. I think there needs to be some discussion.
Okay, appreciate that.
And there's a difference between sheltering, you know, for immediate life safety and then long-term, returning them to long-term housing, that that's kind of the conversation. I'm confident that we'd have a safe place for people to be in those initial hours, maybe even a couple weeks, but that long-term recovery, that's something that would strain our community.
And that's what you were speaking to earlier, is just the long-term, how do we address?
Yeah.
Okay. Another one, we did have the active shooter drills here lately. I know PD and fire department and so many different organizations collaborating on that. I have heard of some gaps that we do kind of need to work on, maybe just equipment gaps is mostly what I've heard.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Every incident and every exercise, we always have strengths that are identified and areas for improvement. And that's exactly why we want to train and exercise, is to identify those gaps before a real-world incident happens. Every incident, especially like the active shooter exercise that we had that was wide-scale, we have after-action reports that kind of assess some corrective actions to improve our plans, and then we look and exercise and train on those during the next future exercises that we do.
Okay, is there any way we can get maybe a copy of that or a breakdown just on, for our information as to what we can do to help with the budgets and whatnot of the departments that are involved?
Yeah, I think we could, yeah, we could share those, or even provide some outbrief information for them, yeah.
Okay, and then, and taking the class earlier this year, you had mentioned that there's like a certain level of property damage that has to be done in order to be, have access to state and federal emergency funds. Have those goalposts moved at all here lately? I know with a lot of the, the budget discussions up there in Washington and in Topeka, are there any alterations or concerns that you have with some of those levels?
So we are keeping a close eye on that, and unfortunately, they're moving in the wrong direction for us to qualify for federal assistance. It's really hard for us to qualify as it is now. Our local county threshold to even apply for assistance is two point seven billion dollars of uninsured losses. And they're moving, they're talking about moving that, it's a calculated index, and they're talking about increasing that significantly. For the state of Kansas, it's five and a half million dollars that they have to qualify before we're even eligible to apply for like public assistance, individual assistance. And it's, it's very challenging, unfortunately. Those who kind of need the assistance are often kind of left out because of those formulas. They're talking about instead of doing a dollar eighty-nine index, they're talking about taking that up to like seven dollars. And that, the numbers are staggering. So nothing has been decided, it's just right now conversations, and of course, we've got advocates trying to communicate the, what the impacts would be if it moves into that direction. So that even relies more on our public and our local community to come together to help our folks recover. We saw that with the tornado in 2022, we did not qualify for assistance, but we were able to recover from generous donations from community and community partners that raised the funds enough for us to distribute and get people back on their feet.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you going to those classes. That's kind of what our push is, is we need more folks to attend these classes and have these discussions and thinking points.
Any other questions? I think this is a good introduction, Julie. Thank you so much for doing that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Look forward to when we actually go through the exercise. A lot of times you, as Julie said, you learn a lot, both positive and areas for improvement after you step through it. Chief, anything you want to add?
No, just if you didn't get a book, I have some extra handouts here. When we do the tabletop, if you'll bring those back, they'll be a good resource for you. And then if you didn't sign in on the sign-in sheet, EOC needs to keep track of you then too, so appreciate you signing in on the sign-in sheet.
I do want to kind of have a final note, too, is look at your own individual household preparedness for disasters, because, you know, we're assuming everything is fine and you're going to be able to come into work and help lead the community, but if you're not prepared yourself as an individual household, that's something we're here to help you guys with as well. So just kind of on that note, it's more than just how do we keep government running, but looking at your own families and households. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. One thing, when we do the tabletop, I don't think we talked about this, but I, going back to what Julie mentioned on recovery, we probably ought to throw a recovery element in there like we did several years ago when we had City Hall wiped out in our scenario. So that would be good for the council, because I think there'll be a lot of focus on that recovery piece. Thank you.
One other thing, too, if you have a, if you have a desk, and this is just personal, something that we as firefighters, and I know PD does the same thing, but there's opportunities once a month to go over to the EOC. You need to get over to the EOC and make sure that your city computer has been updated, because it doesn't automatically update. You have to initiate those things. And the last thing you want to do is to be in there trying to update your computer in the middle of a disaster. So take advantage of those opportunities.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.